Good evening, everyone. We will be getting started at this time. I'm going to give everybody a moment to get to their places. At this time, I would like to call to order the City of Bowie regular city council meeting Monday, June 17th, 2024. In council chambers, it is now 8:06 PM. At this time, I would ask everyone who is able to to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Madam City Clerk, for the record, could you affirm that we have a quorum this evening?
Yes, Mayor, we do have a quorum. In council chambers, we have Councilmember Steph, Councilmember Rogers, Mayor Adams, and Councilmember Brady. And virtually via Teams, we have Councilmember Truesdale, Mayor Protem Wolfley, and Councilmember Endebo Madu.
All righty, thank you. At this point, I will entertain any motions for agenda additions, deletions, or amendments. Councilman Brady?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'd like to move the, I believe it's item H, under consent, which is the transmittal of the legislative action request to new business so we can have a very brief discussion.
There is a motion?
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will now call for the vote. All in favor, please respond with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same favor? Hearing none, motion carries. We will now move on to citizen participation. Thank you, City Clerk. Could Scott?
Vining. Vining.
Vining, okay. Please come forward. You saved me a whole five minutes of trying to get it right.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Happy to help. Hi, good evening to all. I was just going to say simply to address the committee accordingly. A while back, you all had, somebody had put in a flashing red on left-hand turn when you're on Northview going into Bowie Town Center so you can get to the Safeway instead of keeping it a solid red unless the lights are changing in the opposing traffic as opposed to being on Northview, the side traffic coming out of the firehouse or the hospital, et cetera. And that is a beautiful item. One of the things I would like to know is, and I don't know if it's the responsibility of the council or somebody above them accordingly, but when you're on Evergreen and you're leaving from here to go out to Northview accordingly, there is a sign that says no turn on red. If there is a green arrow to come onto Evergreen from Northview, it would be nice to have a green arrow to allow you to proceed, just like they have it on 197 Collington, to be able to come over here when the traffic is going accordingly. And that was what I was going to mention, and if you could do that in that specific location, and others, I can't think of them right now without wasting the council's time, but if you could do them in other places, that would be tremendous. It's a very nice feature.
City staff, do you have that?
Yes, we have noted that. We'll check in and see if that's something that can be accommodated and would improve the flow.
Thank you. Hey, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That is all we have for citizen participation. We will now go into presentations.
There is none for this evening, Mayor.
Nothing on presentations this evening? Okay, we will now go to city boards and committees. Committee appointments and reappointments and swearing in. Okay. Mr. Robert Kellaway was interviewed on June 3rd, 2024 for appointment to the Environmental Advisory Committee. Council concur to appoint him to the committee as a regular member for a two-year term. I will turn to Mayor Protem Defore-Wolfe, if he would like to present a motion.
Yes, I'd like to make the motion to approve nomination, please, and appointment.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please respond with an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same favor? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. Is Mr. Kellaway here? Please come forward so we may be able to swear you in. Could councilmembers come down? Ready? Okay. Would you please raise your right hand? I state your name.
I, Robert Kellaway.
Do swear or affirm?
Do swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution.
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof.
And laws thereof.
And that I will.
That I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute office of regular, state the committee.
Execute the office of regular member of the Environmental Advisory Committee.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
And laws of this state.
And the laws of this state.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Please come forward. This is for you, sir. Congratulations. Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Congratulations.
We appreciate your volunteer. We will now move on to council announcements. I will take the prerogative of saying to city staff and to everyone involved and to Lori Cunningham in particular, the Juneteenth celebration was quite a successful event. It brought a lot of families and people together, and I just want to say thank you to all of you, all who participated, to my council members as well for being there, and just a hearty thank you. Job well done. At this time, I will, if there are any other announcements at this time? Hearing none, we will move on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to echo your comments in regards to the Juneteenth celebration. We had an absolutely beautiful weekend this past weekend weather-wise, so whether people came out to the Juneteenth, they went to the paper and Styrofoam recycling, or they went to our Summer Sunset Concert Series, everybody had a gorgeous weekend to participate in those and many other activities. And I want to thank the staff for being out there and available to work through that. It makes it really easy when we've got some beautiful weather to work in to do that. With that in mind, this week, the weather is churning on us. We're getting into some significant heat. We're looking at heat indexes of over 100 degrees coming, and I'd like everybody to be cognizant of that as that comes along. For the City of Bowie, most of our employees actually work outside, whether you're in law enforcement and a Parks and Grounds crew, working in sanitation, utilities, or in the Streets Division, we have many employees that work outside on a day-to-day basis. So please keep them in mind, show them consideration as they work in these hot temperatures, and everybody, please stay cool this coming week. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you so very much, and I think that is so important, that we all watch out for our safety, not only of ourselves but of our neighbors as well, particularly those who may be elderly. Please check on your neighbors as we go into this heat. All right. Moving right on, we will now go to the consent agenda. Is there a motion? Councilman Brady?
Yes, I would move approval of the consent agenda with the exception of item H, which has been moved to the new business.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please respond with an aye.
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 Opposed, same favor? Hearing none, motion carries. We will now go to old business, the CIP projects bond money explanation. Mr. Matthews will brief council on each CIP project using the bond money in fiscal year 2025. I know you've addressed this a couple of times with Mr. Matthews, but we just wanted to make sure that everyone understood that that money has been used in a very appropriate but also a very meaningful way to support our CIP project. So I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and council. H. Byron Matthews, Finance Director. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you again to discuss the disposition of the bond proceeds. Council made available to the residents on the website the actual report that I will be talking from this evening. During the budget deliberations, we had some changes that allowed us to come to a final total of the appropriated fund balance for FY '25 of $6,339,300. That money is basically monies that we are using from the bond proceeds. During fiscal year '22 and '23, during those budget deliberations, council, in an effort not to increase the city's property taxes, decided not to make a transfer from the general fund as we do to finance our capital projects, as everyone knows that the City of Bowie is a pay-as-you-go municipality, and for most of our capital projects, they are paid from a transfer from the general fund. The ice arena, not the ice arena, excuse me, but the senior center and the gymnasium were both paid by pay-as-you-go financing. And the city normally only issues debt for major capital projects. One has been the city hall and here lately, the ice arena in 2019. If you would follow me, if you have access to the report on the website, the bond proceeds that we'll be using for FY '25 are as follows. Land acquisition, $76,400. Energy efficiency improvements, $10,000. Accessibility improvements, $75,000. Emergency Operations Center, $100,000. City Hall, $80,000. Facilities, security, $114,400. Railroad Museum, $628,600. The Public Works Main Facility, $990,000. Streets and Utilities Building, $21,600. The Railroad Trails Master Plan, $575,100. Centennial Park, $150,000. The Gymnasium, $88,000. Bowie Playhouse, $10,000. The Golf Course, $2,510,600. Stonewater Management will be $442,600. Public Art will be $25,000. Tanglewood Park will be $50,000. Serene Way Park will be $20,000. And lastly, the Chesapeake Bay EPA improvements to our Stonewater Management, $342,000 even. That totals $6,309,300 of bond proceeds that will be used to fund the 2024 and 2025 capital projects, Mayor. That is the end of my report. I will answer any questions, Mr. Mayor, as they come.
Again, thank you so very much, Mr. Matthews. I think it's so important that we have that transparency and that all of our residents and all understand how the bond proceeds were used to enhance the city projects. At this time, I will ask if any of our council members have any questions at this time? Hearing done, I will say thank you again for your effort on that, Mr. Matthews.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. We will now go on to new business. Would you like to address that item? You first, Councilman Brady? Would you like to address that item?
I just thought we'd do it at the end.
Huh? At the end?
The last item.
Okay, no problem. Okay, at this time, Bowie Claw presentation. So if you could, please come forward, and thank you for all the good work you did.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council members, the city staff that really makes the city run, and Bowie residents. I'd like to start out first by saying the last time, that the last two times that Bowie Claw's been here, President in 2014 in November gave $20,000 towards the holding room, and in February of 2015, gave $84,000. This was a gift from a veterinarian that worked here, Dr. Shima, and all I can say today is, Councilman Wolfley, can't see him up here now, I did water your plants at the Ken Hill Garden, so we've kind of stepped down a little bit, but tonight I was asked to talk about. Oh, okay. It needed it to, but tonight, we're going to talk about TNR, and it's called TNR, it's sometimes TNVR for vaccination, trap neuter, if you have females, they're spayed, so it could be TNSVR. The cats are also ear tipped, so it's for identification purposes, but the R also means return, so wherever these cats are trapped, that's where they go back. And the cats that we're talking about are community cats, and I'd like to just bring up a few things about community cats. So most times, people think of cats as, well, they're ferals, and a large portion of that are ferals. These are cats that have been born outside, they haven't been in the person's house, they haven't interacted with humans, sometimes they're very scared of humans. If a kind person puts out food, they'll come after everybody has eaten and gone away, and these are cats that really would be extremely difficult to become, you know, a family pet. And, you know, they have their life, this is something, you know, they have their day-to-day things that they do, and getting them fixed or TNR'd will keep the population of feral cats down, and that's important. But we also have other cats that run the spectrum, so on the far end of that, you have your indoor-outdoor cats, where people let their cats out, they go do their thing, they may come back that night, they may not come back, and we find that in doing our trapping. The trapping that we do for the City of Bowie, initially, we're called upon by either Bowie dispatcher, somebody says there's kittens underneath a shed, or there's a cat here or there, we try to find out who feeds them and then try to get them fixed. Occasionally, you'll find somebody's pet will come along while we're doing this, and we catch the cat. In fact, we have one downstairs, and it's unfortunate, but everything that we do, we run through the city. We fill out a map on the, I guess it's the Argus system, and then put in like how many cats we're going to try to trap, and we send that into city, and Lori Cunningham, who we mentioned before, we work with her, and then they approve our trapping there. So we're not going willy-nilly to different parts of the city, we're actually working with the city, asking for permission, getting permission, and then going out to do the trapping. So occasionally, we do catch indoor-outdoor cats, and, you know, people will say, this cat's always in my yard, it turns out to belong to somebody. And if they don't have a microchip, then you don't know that there's somebody's cat. So, and hopefully, a number of times, we post the cat if they're friendly, and, you know, the owners will see them, that's happened before, and then they'll come and, you know, contact Animal Control, and they'll, you know, retrieve their pet. So you also have lost cats, and it's, it happens all the time. Somebody is getting a delivery to the house, the door is open, somebody's bringing in a washing machine, cat's scared, runs out. And when it gets outside, it's almost like it takes on a different persona, it doesn't know, I could just walk back home, and sometimes it'll come back to like eat if they put out food, but taking that step into the house for whatever reason is a difficult thing. Once they're in the house, then it's like they never left, you know, they know where their bed is and stuff like that. So you have lost cats, and, well, I think the one that you're going to reunite tomorrow is one of those.
Yeah, we had a lost cat picked up through the TNR program, and we were able to find the owner actually within a couple days, once we actually had it in our possession, because we were able to sort of network through Facebook to find where the owner was. And as part of sort of trying to address these like.
Please feel free to use the microphone so that we can hear it for the record.
So as part of trying to kind of address these lost cats in addition to the ferals, what we're starting to do is require the owners that have, you know, their cats picked up by us, have them microchipped, so at least we have a guaranteed identification on these cats, and we can link them to the owners, and then as Animal Control, as requested through Bowie Claw, to impose fines on these owners, which will hopefully encourage them to keep the cats inside and keep them from continuing to kind of contribute to this problem of feral cats in the community.
Yes, when we catch a cat and it's like talking to us and it's acting friendly, the first thing we want to do is scan it, just to see if it belongs to somebody. And sometimes people don't keep their chips updated, but through research, we could usually find the person and reunite the cats. And having cats that come into Bowie Animal Control and that are not identified, having them microchipped is definitely a good idea. If it happens once, maybe it'll happen again, you don't know, but at least the next time, we know, you know, this cat belongs to somebody, and get back to them. So the third, the fourth community cat would be, the saddest of all, these are cats that are dumped. They're either no longer wanted, for whatever reason, they're kicked outside, people move, and this has happened many times over the last five years that I've been involved in this, where people move, they leave their pets, and sometimes in very precarious situations. Just last week, we were assisting with a property management company where the people left, and it was thought that they had seven cats, they left the door open, there's a bag of food, but cats don't know how to open that bag of food, and there was only three remaining, and we were able to get those three cats, and they were, they went to Animal Control, but they were friendly, and the thought was that they have a chance of getting adopted. So that would be pretty much the four types. So when you look at community cats, it's not always ferals, it could be cats down on their lock, cats that are lost, and then cats that have the run of the roost, you know, the owners say, go out, and they go out and do their thing. So we have a couple of slides here, so one of the things we're trying to do is keep the overall population of cats down, and to do that, TNR, getting cats spayed and neutered, does just that. And cats, we see like, where do these cats come from? So there's a cat up here, Sox, that Animal Control was actually able to save, that was, people were feeding it, but it was, the owner had died, and the children didn't really want to take care of it, and it came to us in a very emaciated condition, and the things that some animals have to go through, it's, you know, even if you're not a cat lover, I mean, it has to touch you somehow. And we were able to find a home. Sox gained weight, vaccinated, was given meds, and was adopted. So it turned out to be a good story at the end, but Sox went through three years of neglect, and there's a lot of animals that have that. We actually, just last week, over in the L section, there was a woman who was part of our pet food pantry, and she, we did deliveries to her, and she was, you know, low income, and she didn't answer the door, and we contacted the Bowie City Police, and they did an excellent job in the Fire Department, and unfortunately, when they broke into the house, she had passed, and there was a cat that was there, and I think it was Officer, was it Warranton? Warranton went in there, we had a crate, and he saved the cat. But later, it turns out she was feeding some friendly cats, and we started getting from different neighbors, people were contacting us that, hey, these cats are still here, and just one in particular, and when we went in, we were able to, you know, trap the cat. Turns out, she had been feeding this cat for eight years, and when we brought the cat to the vet, this cat was friendly. This cat was a highly adoptable cat, then went through eight years of being on the street, but it's a highly adoptable cat. So if we look at the numbers there, and you see where one unspayed cat has four kittens, and they have more, and they have more, and the numbers that you can read if you just like, you know, Google it, I mean, some of them are like really frightening, like, you know.
In six years, I, I'm sorry, in six years, a mother cat and her offspring can produce about 420,000 cats. So that's why we are so hard on TNRs. That prevents situations like that from happening, as do things like voucher programs to encourage pet owners to spay and, you know, neuter their animals.
So the thing is. So the thing is, though, like, when you came here and you're driving along, you don't see the 420,000 cats. And you say, "Well, is this number correct?" It can be. But what happens is, for a cat to grow up as a kitten, to make it to adulthood, it's a very perilous journey. And most of the cats, most of the kittens, don't make that journey. And that's why the numbers are so low. And it's not just coyotes and hawks, just, you know, other predation. If they're sick, there's no gut for them. It's nothing sadder to see some of these kittens that their eyes are shut because they had upper respiratory infection, all kinds of illnesses, and then they pass. And so what you're seeing walking around are, like, the healthiest of the cats and the luckiest of the cats that made it. So keeping these numbers down, in a sense, to a lot of people, is just keeping all these kittens from perishing in just terrible ways. So that's our goal. I mean, to keep as many kittens, kittens need to be wanted. They shouldn't be outdoors in these situations. So we're out there trying to do the TNR, working together with Animal Control, to keep, you know, the numbers down as low as possible. And the thing, where, there's been lots of studies as to, you know, what's the effectiveness of doing the TNR program, because there'll always be more cats. And in a sense, because of people, there will be always more cats. People leaving their, you know, cats, ignoring their cats, letting the cats out and stuff, not fixing their cats, you know? So what do you do? Well, you just try to do the best you can to keep the numbers as low as possible. And to respond, what we do is, communities, citizens will contact us, contact Animal Control, say, you know, "I have these cats. I've been feeding them. A new cat just joined us." So we go ahead and try to spay or neuter that cat, and just keep everything stable. There's a lot of success stories where people are feeding cats for years and years and years. The numbers are the same. And then you have other stories where, you know, people aren't just not doing due diligence. And so working with everyone, people that don't like cats, people that do like cats but maybe need more education, is something that we try to do. So, there's a map up there, and what it represents is, up until June, places that we've did TNRs. And so it's not like each dot is one cat. We just did trapping over on Eighth Street in Old Bowie, and three adults, four kittens. And we know that there are four more kittens that we have to get, but we're waiting for them to go from the hiding with mom phase to going out and mom bringing them out to where they can have food. We want to get them. That will then end the cat situation just in that one spot. And if you go through there, some are just one cat, but we've had numerous kittens, families, people that do have a colony and want help. They don't want to have any more kittens. So I do have a little chart over there, which kind of shows what I know of, of what we've been doing since the end of 2019. And if you want to look at it, the numbers are definitely pretty high. So, da-da-da-da. So when we get, when we get cats and kittens, at certain ages, these cats are easy to adapt to people. It could start out where we get a cat that's pregnant, somebody agrees to foster it, the kittens are born in a house, they're around, the foster, I mean, they're probably the friendliest-to-human kittens that you could ever find, because they've known, they've known people since they were born. Or, you know, we have the mom, we have the kittens, and mom weans them until a certain period of time. We work with the kittens, and they become highly adoptable, you know, people-loving kittens. And then some of the other cats that we find that are friendly cats, I mean, you kind of know it once you trap them, they're talking to you. A feral won't do that. Normally, a feral won't do that. They'll hiss at you, maybe, but the, you know, the meowing, and then, you know, you could pet them a little bit. And they could make excellent pets, because they used to be a person's pet. So, so having these adoption events, thanks to the city of Bowie, thanks to Bowie Animal Control, the three kitty halls that we've had have been very successful. Nowadays, it's kind of hard to reach people. How do you do it? And by having the city government advertise these things, in addition to BoiClaw on Facebook and Nextdoor, the turnouts have been good. These cats have joined people's families, and I guess it's enriched people's lives. And I think we covered a lot of things. If anybody has any questions?
Yeah. If I could, first, thank you for all that you do. We appreciate that. I do want to make sure that you say it loud and clear. When we're talking about the TNR and other things, that it is something that you do in a very humane method. So could you elaborate on that just a tad?
Yes. We, normally, most of our trapping, almost, almost all of it is done where somebody is actively taking care of the cats. So if somebody says, "Two weeks ago, I saw a cat that went into a storm drain," well, how would you catch that cat? I mean, when would you see it again? So when we put the traps out at somebody's house that's feeding, then we monitor the trap. So if the cat goes in the trap, then it's not there for a longer period of time. We then put, like, a towel over it, and the towel, it kind of darkens the area. The cat then relaxes as much as it can, but they won't, they won't hurt themselves. The night before they get spayed and neutered, we don't give them any food. We do give them water at a certain point, and then we take them for surgery the next day. After surgery, then we monitor the cat for at least 24 hours. If it was a cat that had been pregnant or lactating, then we keep them an additional day. And then we release them at the exact same spot that we got them. So they know that area. However they were surviving before, they can survive the same way. So we try to do this as humanly as possible. Sometimes, the cats are sick, so we pay for Convenia, which is like a two-week antibiotic. And we've trapped cats that have had some horrendous injuries, and we were very fortunate that in almost every case, the people that were feeding these cats agreed to help these cats get better. We set up big dog crates, and the cat will stay there. We had one with a broken fibula. It was like fractured. It was like six weeks. And it wasn't a happy experience, because the cat didn't want to be there, and it let itself know. But they did it. Cat got better. We've had a number of cats that we posted on Facebook where skin has been torn off, they've been in a fight and stuff, and they needed healing time, and we try to find medical fosters. We're actually always looking for fosters. The amount of cats that need help far outweighs the amount of people that are right now reaching out to do so. And, but doing this, I don't think that you'd be involved in this if you didn't feel a humane nature towards the cats.
Hey, thank you very much. I'd like to open it up if any of my council members have any questions. Councilmember Rogers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, thank you both for what you do. I will tell you, I was raised in the 60s and 70s up in South Jersey, and we always had stray cats. And they became part of the household. Some of them could adapt, others would lay on my feet on the bed at night or whatever. So I just learned about the cat colonies about five, six months ago, as long as I've been in office. And I thought the concept was extremely unique. I never thought about it. I never thought about stray cats. I have a good friend that lives over in Fairwood, and she had, she takes them, she fosters them. So we had a conversation so I could better understand it. So one of the emails that I did receive early on was around research being done and proving that putting the feral cats back out after you do the TNVR was basically not the way it's done now, that research shows that that doesn't work. Now, this was coming from a constituent. I don't know, so I'm asking you, are you familiar with that research, or what are your thoughts about it? I would think that they're putting them back out, so it must be, you know, proven that it works well.
A lot of people refer to an opinion piece that was in The New Yorker. The person is a writer, a bird enthusiast. I'm a bird enthusiast. I've certainly spent a lot of money in the feed store and in gambles. They have Wild Birds Unlimited. And the backing that he had was from a group that most people think are pro-animal, but if you really look into their website and look into their practices, are really anti-dog cat or having any animals to do with people at all. And so some of the studies that he talked about are disproven and old, and you have to kind of wrangle things to work. Having, having a program requires people to be on top of it, though. And so we've trapped that people's, you know, they have their small colony or a number of cats, and then years later, they have, like, more, but they've never contacted the city, saying, "Hey, I've got a few more cats. Can we get them fixed? And now I have some more babies." So it's really incumbent on people to act responsibly. And we're not asking that people that are feeding the cats be given, like, a free pass. I mean, they need to take the food away before it gets dark, so, you know, the raccoons and coyotes don't come around. They need to monitor their colony, and, you know, if a cat is sick, contact us. We're able to catch them and then take them and get some vetting. The TNR clinics are a great resource for us for a sick cat. And so it's nice to have the heart to want to feed the cats and give them water, but, you know, you also need to think of your neighbors. You don't want these cats to, you know, population to grow. I mean, some people are okay with seeing one or two cats walking around. I mean, 100 years ago, you had all kinds of animals walking around. Now, nowadays, it's like, "Oh, a bird did something on my car," you know? And it's like, "Can we get rid of the birds?" I've had people contact BoiClaw, "Look, I have a, on my Ring camera, you know, there's a fox that came around." Well, if you look at the map, you live right next to the woods. So of course you're going to have animals, wildlife, because that's, that's what life used to be and stuff. So it really is, responsibility works in a number of different ways. And so I think the more responsible people are, then the less problems you're going to have overall. And, you know, there are places where we've trapped several times, and the results have been good. So I do think that if you look at the overall lifespan of an indoor cat and a feral or outdoor cat, it's remarkably different. I mean, you could, you could Google this easily, and you'll see two to five years for an outdoor cat, 14 to 17 years for an indoor cat. And so what tends to happen is if you trap a colony and get them all fixed, over a period of five years, you'll see less cats. I mean, accidents happen, things predation happens, cars, all kinds of, all kinds of things. So you, the eight cats you see now, four years from now, maybe you'll see two or three. So, and, you know, if you could live with that, then that's a good thing. If you can't, there's worse things to deal with than just seeing a cat on somebody's porch.
That's right. Thank you very much, and thank you for what you do. And whenever you, whenever you post on Facebook, I share your posts with the rest of the community.
Thank you. I've seen that, yeah.
I'll have you, okay. Well, thank you very much. Thank you for what you do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you. We will go to Michael.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have a question, Paul. I just wanted to say thank you for your work. We have, as you're well aware, some residents on Fourth Street in Old Bowie, who you've been helping out, doing some TNR for a very large cat colony there. They have noticed a significant difference and are very grateful to you. I know it's ongoing work. I know it's not been easy. I know we got some challenging customers out there, but thank you for that. Also, a resident on New York Town Drive expressed her thanks as well for your tremendous compassion when she was dealing with a difficult situation with her cat. Appreciate your work. You're one of the many volunteers without whom our government would be a lot more expensive, because we'd have to pay a whole team of people to do what you do alone oftentimes. So thank you for your work and your passion on this. Really appreciate it.
Well, the first place that you mentioned, we've trapped seven cats, and that doesn't seem like a lot, but when they've been trapped before, it's really hard to get them a second time, you know? Once burned, twice shy. And of the seven that we had, only one of them needed to be spayed. So that kind of showed that the cats that were there, they're being fed, it was a nice area, there's not heavy traffic on that street, and so they did well. The, also, those, five of those cats tended to stay around that house. So the neighbors that are going up and down the street, they're always seeing cats. Well, those cats are not, not there anymore, in conjunction with a program that we have with the city. And they're, you know, they're safe. But if you drive by that one particular house, you don't see the cats. And we set out a camera, we moved the feeding station to behind the house, we set up a camera, and I could send you, you know, if you want some of the pictures, but the times where they're coming are mostly at night, 1:00, 3:00. So they're doing whatever they're doing, but then those are coming to eat, people are really not seeing them. And if you talk to, I think, the people, now, I haven't, but if you talk to the people that have contacted you, ask them, "Do you notice the difference?" And if they're being honest, I would, I would think they would say yes. So...
Thank you, Constable. Constable Brady?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Nadler. Good seeing you again. Just for, you might say, disclaimer, I've been a longtime supporter of Claw and helped them in the early stages when they were approaching the city about the standalone facility, shelter. And once that was resolved and finalized, then I became a paid supporting member and have been since. So they do excellent work. They have an expertise that kind of pairs with, kind of like COGS with the city, they mesh together nicely with Animal Control. But I do appreciate what you've done and the information you've provided. They're very helpful. I've got a question or two for staff. I know, I'm very familiar, unfortunately, I'm not a cat lover, because I am very, very allergic to cats. I have always been throughout my life. But I'm very familiar with dogs, and we've had dogs going back to 1990. The city, the county has the licensing, it's $5 for spayed and neutered and 25, I think, for unaltered dog. Is there a similar thing with cats, with their license?
Jess, would you like to handle that?
Yes. So it, the price has, for spayed and neutered animals, has increased. It's now $10 if they're spayed or neutered. 25 has remained for fixed. That exists partially to track animals that are required to have rabies vaccines. So you need to have a license if you have a dog, if you have a cat, or if you have a ferret, because those are considered domestic rabies vectors. So that's why we have the license requirement. Those are what needs to be licensed.
But for cat licensing, is it a similar 5 or 10?
Yes. Yep, it is. Across the board, it's 10.
Okay, so for all I'm good. So, because I find it's very effective, at least from my perspective, with dogs, it works quite nicely. And then it sounds like from what the comments that Mr. Nadler was talking about with regards to getting information out, I'm wondering if there's not an opportunity to look at developing a communication link from staff, Animal Control, to all the different HOAs to try and push out this information on an annual basis or what have you, and hopefully get the HOA to push it out to their members, to provide link... to provide links for the services that we can provide, as well as the rules and some suggested action. So I would suggest that maybe that's something staff can look at.
Thank you. We will look into that.
Okay.
Thank you.
That is it for me. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it. Again, thank you, Paul, for coming in. Do greatly appreciate the time and energy you spend on this on a regular basis, as well as your coming in this evening to join us. A couple of quick questions for you. When we do the TNR, is there a, are vaccines, are rabies included in that as well?
Well, the TNVR refers to, so TNR is a shortened version of actually like D-N-S-V-E-R. But yes, getting a rabies vaccine as well as distemper. Distemper actually is four vaccines in one. And where that comes in handy is especially like for an adult cat, people let their cats out. And if they come across a community cat that's been fixed and that has its vaccination, then the chance of anything spreading to somebody's private cat definitely decreases. So getting these cats, all, every one of them gets a vaccination. And under the city grant, they, rabies and now distemper is also part of that.
Excellent. Thank you. I thought distemper was. I wasn't sure about the rabies. So that's very helpful. Thank you. And I echo what Councilman Brady said, which is we certainly would like to, I think, spread the word so that people can be more responsible. And I'll ask staff, as you're working through, some of your thoughts would be greatly appreciated in terms of letting people know what services are available, how to respond, how to be responsible, and what being responsible means in terms of actually benefiting the community of cats that people may see out there. Question for you. You mentioned a couple of things in terms of accidental death earlier. But is there any normal predator out in this community? Is it fox or anything like that? That would make a kind of higher in the standing than the food chain, if you will, that, you know, actually, you know, would be helping keep these populations in their control?
Well, there's been, there's, did you want to?
Yeah, that would be coyotes and foxes especially are known to kill cats, which is also why we try to have people keep their cats inside rather than outside, not just, you know, the colony cats.
We've received like pictures from people. They'll message us and say, hey, I've seen a coyote on Mill Branch. I've seen a coyote, you know, in different places. And coyotes are definitely the apex compared to the cats. With foxes, a healthy cat will take on a fox. And foxes really don't want to mess with them. Kittens, of course, you know, the foxes will go after the kittens. If a cat is like older and can't protect itself, Councilman Stebb mentioned one in particular where the foxes were starting to go after that. And it really couldn't mount a defense against that. So we were able to help in that situation. I don't think it's as big of a problem with, you know, the foxes and the cats. But if a cat isn't on its game, then a fox can definitely be a problem.
Excellent. Well, thank you. And I do know that there are circles where we have concern about cats as predators as well. Are there any particular things? I mean, everyone talks about, you know, controlling the mice and whatnot. Any negative effects for having cats out and about?
Yeah, I mean, I'm a bird lover. And, you know, cats, cats do go after birds. They're very patient. They'll sit by a nest and wait for a fledgling to come down. My thoughts on that is it's far better to have, let's say, two or three cats than 20 or 30 cats in terms of the overall numbers of predation of cats and birds. Keeping the numbers down, keeping the numbers of cats that are outside down is imperative. And bird population, you could point to cats, but that's only a very small reason why bird population has dropped. I mean, if you look at monoculture, skyscrapers, global warming, things that they used to eat. I remember as a kid going cross-country, and you had to stop to clean your windshield. You don't see these bugs anymore. You don't see as many butterflies. I mean, things are taking away the habitats of the birds, the food that the birds eat, the plants that are grown that the birds used to, you know, stop with. I mean, cats might be a problem, but I think they're very miniscule compared to everything that they're facing, you know, throughout the world.
Good point. Well, thank you again for all the good work and also thanks for watering for me.
Thank you. Any other questions from council?
If I can make two comments. One, the city used to have a, what do you call it, microchip voucher. And I know that it's difficult for, I guess, whatever vet clinic used to do it, they stopped. But if there was a way, we could figure out an economical way to have like maybe a microchip clinic, like we do have the shot clinic that we do, what, twice a year? Or to somehow figure out how we could economically that people can get microchips for like 10 bucks or 15 bucks or something like that. I think that would help. If you're going to let your cats go outside, they should be microchipped so that we know what's going on. And kind of like a plug for animal control as well, maybe the thought of having a part-time animal control officer whose focus might be on doing some TNR work. And that would be, as a part-timer, maybe that might be a segue for later on if they like the employee to be a full-time member. You know, with two officers covering seven days a week is difficult. So and Mondays, there's an open day for us to bring in feral cats, community cats, to space spot at the animal shelter in Upper Marlboro. So if you had someone that came in on Sunday, did some trapping, took them down on Monday, brought them out on Tuesday, we'd be happy to work with them. But that might be a good thing, too, to have a city representative also involved with TNR. And just the, what the word, impromptu of being an officer. We're just volunteers dealing, talking with citizens. As you can imagine, there are times where, you know, we're just a volunteer, and people come at you pretty hard. So if there was an officer to kind of, well, I think, ma'am, you need to talk to officer and then move from there, it might be a good thing. So but we'd be happy to work with, you know, anybody. But it's a long and involved process to do trapping. And it's really too much to ask two officers that take care of dogs and so many other things to also do trapping. So it's just a thought.
All right. Thank you so very much. Any other council questions? Just for those in the audience, during these things we don't entertain, questions and all from the floor, just so you know that we're not being rude, okay? Hey, thank you so very much, and we appreciate you coming out tonight.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
We will now go on to item B, the Corridor Region Small Business Development Center update. Please come forward.
Thank you, Mayor, for allowing us to present tonight.
Anything?
My name is Kyle Bayless. I'm the regional director, also known as the managing director for the Small Business Development Center. We're an organization that, we're grant-based. Our grant is held by the University of Maryland. We provide no-cost counseling services to our, to small businesses throughout the state. The region that I'm responsible for is, is, okay. How's this? Okay. Sorry. I wasn't on the AV team in high school, but I'll work on it, okay? And if you can't see the smile on my face right now, I can't wipe it off because we had a great weekend. My daughter got married on Saturday. It was a beautiful Saturday, and we had 30 of our closest friends and guests in our backyard. So, you know, anybody who has a daughter and they say they want to have a marriage in their backyard, you're guaranteed to save about 10% on a wedding, okay? So just, yeah, it's a fantastic thing. But getting back to the subject. So our job is to provide no-cost counseling services to small businesses in the state of Texas, state of Maryland. We're a statewide organization. The region that I'm responsible for includes Prince George's County, Montgomery County, Montgomery County, and Anamona County. I used to also have Baltimore County and Baltimore City, which was a little too much for any man or person to handle, okay? I've been with the organization for 16 years. And so I have a lot of experience in dealing with small businesses and how to see how they grow and all the challenges that they face. We've had the honor to work with the City of Bowie through Mr. King. He brought us in to help assist the small businesses in the city. And it's been a pleasure working with him and also working with the small businesses in the county. We are, see, I guess, is everybody, if you can't see the presentation, a clicker. Okay. Like I said, I wasn't captain of the AV team, but I have a presentation to provide.
Look left.
Left?
Your left.
My left. Okay. Like I said, okay, all right.
You can just, you know, also go on back.
Okay. So that's still this one. All right. So we, we do speak on the manager of the Corridor Region, which is the region that includes those four counties that I mentioned earlier. The City of Bowie is part of that. The City of Bowie has provided us funding for supporting the small businesses in the community here. And we've enjoyed it for many, many years and hope to continue to do that. The additional funding is, the additional funding, sorry. The additional funding is for, that allows us to assist, you might say, move people up in the line, to support businesses in the community quicker and faster, and helps us supply resources to consultants that we have in the area. I'm responsible for 10 consultants in those four counties. We have a consultant that is actually dedicated and is located in the City of Bowie. His primary office is at the Bowie Vic, on the campus. And he also has office space here in the City Hall whenever he needs it. We, there we go. So this is a list of all the different programs we offer. And I did provide some copies, about nine copies of the presentation. So if anybody'd like to have a copy, to review the kind of services that we provide. But like I mentioned earlier, primarily what we offer is we provide one-on-one business advising services. And we have offices in this area, in the city. One of the areas that we focus on is training workshops. We try to provide small businesses with the skills and needs they need to try to be successful. And really, our motto is what's the best outcome for the company? It may not be what, it may not, should, may not be in business. But that's our role. Our role is to make sure that they are successful in no matter whatever pursuit they care to work on. In those workshops, one of the challenges that we have, which is probably, you know, one of those things that you might say was the silver lining of the pandemic, and that's the fact that we can service so many more people when it comes to training. So we can do a lot of online training, as well as we can do probably, you know, before the pandemic, we were probably seeing three businesses a day at best. Now, we're seeing four and maybe even five if we can. And it's because it's all virtual. And we have found, and I think we perfected through various platforms, that we can provide these kinds of services. And we have found it a great way to really reach more of a larger part of the community throughout the town, the city. One of the main areas that we really are proud of is our financial services, our underwriting abilities. Most of the consultants that work, and I hate to use the word pronoun, my, it's not my. It's I get the pleasure of working with this great organization and these people. And a lot of them are former bankers, are former finance people. So they know exactly what banks are looking for, or they have relationships with banks. So they know exactly what banks are looking for. Or if we can't find, or they're unbankable, as we say, they may have low credit scores or other things that's part of also our responsibility to educate them. Financial education, as well as trying to help them with debt recovery, with credit, you know, improve their credit in other areas that we know that will improve their overall bankability and obtaining funding that they need. Okay, I'm losing my screens here. Okay, okay. So the other thing, too, is we also provide business planning. That's the one thing we, any good business is sitting down and making sure they have the right roadmap. If anybody's ever drove or taken a long trip across the country, like to California or someplace, you don't take a trip unless you know where you want to stop and buy gas, okay? So that's really the way we look at a business plan. And that is what are the steps you need to take? And where do you need to stop? And what are some of the milestones you need to really meet in order for you to be a successful business? Or if you don't meet those milestones, then what is Plan B? So that's one area that we look for. We also try to help while companies are trying to develop their business or their idea that they want to pursue is market research. And through great inventions and technology and things like that, like artificial intelligence and things like that, it has really helped us increase the ability to help businesses find the right target market for their product. You know, I've had clients who say, I want to open a restaurant for people who are diabetics. They're all over the place. So you have to figure out and you have to explain to them where is the best place? Or what's realistic in trying to do something like that? So marketing, our ability to do market research, and we have very, we have a, we're a nationwide organization. Grants are granted to each state through the federal government. I probably should have said this first. We go through appropriations. We are not a line item with the SBA or any other type of organization. So we're not, unfortunately, I say unfortunately, but we have to go through the SBA in order for our allocation to be funded by state. And that, and whatever, you know, model they use to determine that the funding for each of those states is based on population and things like that. So if I'm telling anybody anything, anything new, I hope I'm not, you know, repeating myself. But that funding is limited. So as I said, mentioned, we do go to what we call stakeholder or other resource partners that we depend heavily on to help us support those other functions that help a business be successful, whether it's training or whatever the case that we might find is beneficial to that client. We also have an export assistance program. We have two or three members within the state organization. There's 50 total employees in the SBDC throughout the state. So we don't look at it as what are the resources and what are the expertise, what is the expertise that we have just in the area that I'm responsible for. But we are able to collaborate with all those different resources throughout the state. So we think we have subject matter experts in almost every. So, we think we have subject matter experts in almost every category. And if we don't have, we know exactly where to go. We're well-connected with all the state organizations, whether it's Tedco or, you know, whoever, the Commerce or whoever it is, we know, we better know who that is, that person, that organization that we need to go to in order for that business to fund the right resources. But export assistance is one area. But a lot of small businesses don't do exporting because it is a lot of heavy lifting for small businesses. So, even though we, even though the S B A is requiring us to provide a certain number of people who we consider are certified to do exporting, typically it takes years for those types of, that type of revenue stream to develop through small businesses. We also have a very strong, and this is the one area that I'm very proud of, that's under my guidance, and that is the technology and commercialization. And that is, is how do we take all these great ideas that are out there, especially in the state of Maryland? It's one of the priorities for the state of Maryland. I think everybody knows that. So, how do we take and how do we commercialize technology? Since we are part of the University of Maryland, that's all we are. We don't get any of their financial resources or support. It all comes from the federal government or it comes from great organizations like the city of Bowie or other organizations like the E D Cs and other various, what we consider stakeholders and resource partners throughout the state that help us fund special areas like technology commercialization. So, it doesn't matter if you're an academic. It doesn't matter if you're, you know, developing an app in your garage. We're there. We support everybody. It doesn't matter who you are. And again, I can't say this enough, and I know free is a really strong word, but we do not charge for our services. All our consulting services are free. We do, at times, will charge for training. And that's strictly just to cover cost. And in some cases, we do it to also generate another revenue stream for us that will help offset any kind of ask from organizations like the city of Bowie. The other area too, that's not listed on here, that is something that we started about twelve years ago, is bilingual counseling. And bilingual counseling, providing counseling in Spanish. And primarily what we're focused on are the first generations. And so, the counselors, we now have four. We started with one when I started here sixteen years ago. And so, now we have four. And it is the, demographically, they are the boom. They're the new baby boom and it's going to be a big part of our future. So, our underlying mission really is, is to take that first generation, hire that consultant that is a first-generation consultant. Because immediately you have trust, immediately you have connection. The Latino community is not monolithic. So, we have various types of counselors, one from Cuba, Peru, Venezuela, El Salvador, and places where we know that will connect into the community quickly. They're a resilient community during the pandemic or during any kind of economic downturn. They are, they will, they're the most entrepreneurial, most aggressive community, I should say, that we get the opportunity to work with. Most of the ethnicity or the area of the world these people come from is mostly from El Salvador. And they come here because this is where the El Salvadoran community is. Most of that is located around Prince George's County. The highest concentration is in Montgomery County. The second largest is in Prince George's County. And then from there, it spreads out into Baltimore, the city of Baltimore. What we are finding though, that as cities are trying harder to increase their tax revenues, a lot of these communities are now being outpriced and they're being pushed out into more of the rural areas of the state. Despite that, we still try our best to try to support that group of people. The one thing that is, that everybody should realize is the, these entrepreneurs, of all entrepreneurs, as far as I'm concerned, is family, is community. It's about how do I help the other person? It really is. It's about, it's about not necessarily going out and finding a loan or micro lending or something like that. But it's equity in investing into their own business. And it has been, you know, one of the things that we want to try to move them from being less dependent on each other and money they save into trying to be more creditworthy and to navigate the underwriting process of finding money that they could build their business. One of the other biggest challenges is, since they are the future of the population of this country, is, like I said earlier, is not only do we want that first generation to be as successful as possible, but one of the challenges is if things, if the economy does have a downturn like it did during the pandemic and also the recession back in two thousand eight, is they will pull their children out of school. And if they pull those kids out of school, then in a lot of cases, they never return. So, they have one of the highest dropout rates in the country. So, one of the things that we are looking at is the payoff is, is make that first generation successful so that the second generation, even if they go to community college, you know, that's what we want. And then the third generation is when potentially they go in and to get into STEM and other, you know, deeper sciences and things that we feel are going to be, that are going to help us as an economy increase. Any questions before I move on?
Yeah. If I could, and just kind of catching up and make sure we're on the same page here. Now, with the S B D Cs, are we still looking at that being federally funded? And if so, as we're looking at that and moving, and I know, having had experience with these a lot in the past, are we seeing where the seven J programs and those programs are still there to provide the funding to assist the program? Go ahead.
Yeah. So, our biggest funder is the federal government. We go through appropriations, like I mentioned earlier. We try to find money anywhere we can, but it has to fit within what our mission is. If it doesn't fit in with our mission, then it doesn't really make sense for us to pursue funding of some specialty program. If it fits into how do we grow the economy? How do we, how do we build businesses? How do we increase the tax base in the communities, whether it's county, city, state? That is our primary focus. The second part of the biggest part of our funding does come from the state. And then we do also get some funding from the University of Maryland. But primarily, that funding is in kind. It's not financial. It's office-based. It's things like that, which ninety-seven percent, probably ninety-eight percent of our budget is really, is payroll, is trying to hire the best people. And what my goal is as a manager is how do I hire and retain the best employees? And we don't always pay the best. I don't know, if anybody's worked for the government, you know, that's one thing that they don't, they don't do a great job at. So, we try our hardest to try to give them other ways to develop themselves, whether it's through professional development, whether it's giving them, being part of the university, they also get tuition remission or they get free tuition. So, I've had consultants that have earned law degrees. I've had three that have earned doctor degrees. So, that's the benefit that we really try to have them understand is something that can really benefit them along.
Are you still able to reach out to the retired service corps?
Yeah. So, the two other organizations that are under the Small Business Administration, one of them is SCORE. And SCORE is the retired group of, you know, retired people who have decided to give back to the community. They're fantastic. I can tell you some fantastic stories about, one, for example, a client who wanted to do an agreement with a Chinese company. We don't get into legal services and we don't get into accounting services. We don't get in anything that might have a high liability, especially when it comes to legal. But what we did is we set that person up with someone who's a former SCORE international attorney. And we sat down with him for two hours. And even though he didn't get, this person didn't get all his questions answered, what he did get was, we said, you now need to go to someone who can help you. What type of attorney can really help you develop this agreement with this Chinese company? He knew all the answers. We probably cut hours and hours off of that person of having to go in and ask and repeat the same questions that we were able to supply this person through the expertise of the SCORE organization. Another organization that we're very proud of is the Women's Business Center. There's a Women's Business Center right here at Bowie State. They do a tremendous job. They don't get as much funding as we do, but their primary focus is on women-owned businesses. Even though they will support, it doesn't matter what gender owns the business, they will support them. And we frequently refer clients to each other, depending on what we think their expertise is. And then, of course, there's just other organizations within the state that we know about, whether it's a local organization, whether it's in the Department of Commerce, whoever it is. Our job is to know, how do we connect? How do we connect them to the right people?
Okay, thank you. Because, you know, I've had a lot of experience with S B D C. And when I was growing my business, they were invaluable. When we saw, talking about the seven J programs and understanding, at that time, you had to pay a minimal amount to be able to get that. But the SCORE represent, and just all of the information, when you're trying to put together your accounting systems and all of that, to have people come in and review that for you and all, that's significant.
Financial literacy is probably the number one value for small businesses. It really is.
Significant.
Yes. And if there's one thing that we really are trying to be focused on is the underserved community. And how do we teach that financial literacy to that group of small businesses? We also provide other services such as eight A certification. So, that government contracting obviously is huge in this area. So, we want our businesses to take as much, to take advantage of as many opportunities as they could possibly have. Just recently, the S B A out of the city of Baltimore had their annual luncheon. And one of the, the person who was awarded the government contractor of the year was a woman that I worked with fifteen years ago. And I helped this person get her eight A certification. And because of that, now she is extremely successful. So, it's those kinds of stories that just make you feel, you know, we're not here for the money. We're really not. We're here for giving back and trying to really, you know, a lot of us, if you talk to many of the people who work at the S B D C, they are here to honestly reward themselves, feel good about, you know, giving back to the community. And that's, honestly, that's the reason why I came to Washington, D.C. I came to Washington, D.C. to work for a member of Congress. I wanted to change the world. Well, I found a place where I could a little bit, just, you know, not much, but could possibly change the way things are.
I didn't mean to monopolize so much time. Any of my colleagues have any other questions right at this point? Councilman Stad?
Sure. I appreciate you coming out of your time this evening. You listed a success story in your presentation to us, Axum Consulting, Inc. I see that they're at Melford in Bowie. When was that success story? You reference two contracts they won in your presentation to us?
So, success stories. Well, one of the things that we are going to offer going forward as I go through this presentation is there are two new, we've always offered success stories. We've always offered, how do we tell us, how do we tell our story about the small business and their success? In the past, because of compliance and because of other regulations, we can't tell, unfortunately, who that client is. We can't tell you how much of a loan they got, you know, and for good reasons. Okay? They don't want you to tell them in a lot of cases. So, one of the things that we developed is we developed a special permission form so that if we went to that client, we said to them individually, would you like to tell the story? And if they say yes, then we will write a success story for them. And one of the things, the great thing about A I is that it has cut our time to nothing. Because all we have to do is we have to plug in a simple prompt of what it is, that, what kind of success they had, who they are, what they are, those kinds of things, with anonymity, without, you know, revealing too much about them, and tell just a tremendous story about how we engage with them, what were their problem? How did we help them? And more importantly, where are they going from now? Where are they going from this point on? And so, what A I has done for us, it has made it so that instead of having our consultants spend, in some cases, days, and they're not writers, you know, writing a success story, we have now a standard way that we can prompt A I to write these really great stories about the successes of small businesses in the state of Maryland.
Okay. Any other questions, Michael?
My question was in your public presentation to us, you specifically referenced Axum Consulting, Inc., that they received a six-figure loan from TruStead, one-point-five percent interest rate. It was one of the success stories you listed in your presentation to us. I just wanted to know what year that was.
Oh, well, so the, I'll have to go back and like exactly which year it was. But the process that we're using right now of the success story, literally, we have just now created it and we're now implementing it full-time. And in particular, the region that I have the opportunity to manage, of the sixty success stories that have been created for the state of Maryland, fifty-five of them are from the four counties here. One of the challenges that we do have is we have to get their permission. Okay? If we don't get their permission, and there's a lot of reasons why they don't want us to give their permission, then it's a little more difficult for us to give maybe the city, you know, the city of Bowie very specific information or more success stories than probably you would care to have. I'm sure I didn't answer your question, but I, what I'm really trying to get at is, we're working through this. It's, there's so much compliance in this process. We're just making sure we're not going to do anything wrong that's not going to prevent us from violating the compliances that we're required to follow.
Okay. Councilman Rogers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one quick question. It's probably more for staff. How do we go about making sure that our residents here in Bowie that are entrepreneurs or looking to become entrepreneurs? How do we constantly get that out in front of folks so that they know and understand? I'm more than happy to share this with the chamber, this information. But there has to be, in order, I find that sometimes entrepreneurs are their own worst enemies. And planning is not number one on their list, is making money. So, the thing is, sometimes you have to constantly put information out there, you know, market share in order for it to kind of sink in. Maybe I should stop. know, market share, in order for it to kind of sink in. Maybe I should stop thinking, you know, get some counseling.
So I came from the private sector. I worked there most of my life. I worked in technology, technology development, some of, helped create some of the biggest country, some of the most successful businesses in the country today. And one of the things that we had, that we don't have access to today, is advertising. So because of the way that funding is structured, we cannot, we cannot advertise our services. So I can't tell you how many times in the 16 years that I've been here, someone says, I've never heard of you. Where have you been? You know why? Because if you know the concept of a sales agent, you hire somebody to hire, to sell a product for you, in a lot of ways, the stakeholder is our sales agent. So we depend heavily on our resource partners and our stakeholders to promote us. And, you know, we'd like to be top of mind. We'd like for them to say we're the best, greatest thing in the world. But sometimes they, you know, it's not, we don't have that control. So we don't have that control of advertising. So we can't advertise our services. We can only do it through promoting training, and to stress, and to ensure that it's on the calendars of our stakeholders and those who are our funders.
So you answered the question, so we, as a city, can advertise on your behalf? So is that, so I look to Director King. Is that something that we can do more of? Have you thought about how we can, you know, is it something that we put in the Bowie News Brief, you know, once a quarter or something, just to keep reminding businesses? I don't know. I'm just...
So one of the things that we really feel like we're going to do a better job advertising is through the success, is the volume of success stories, to see that, you know, that we can actually help them with specific things that they're trying to deal with. And then, one of the number one things is funding, is to find money. So, you know, so we're trying our best through, you know, through Mr. King and other people who we consider are point of contacts within, within our network of supporters, to consistently promote us as a way, our place to go, to seek assistance. One of the challenges we have, and I mentioned earlier, is that, you know, the silver lining of the pandemic is, it makes, it allows us to see more businesses. But it also means we have a lesser presence in the community. And that, for us, is, it wasn't a model that we were built on. But the thing is, is it does help us, you know, promote us, help us promote our services and what we can, and how we can potentially help. And real quickly, I just wanted to share some of our...
Let me see if Director King wants to say something.
First thing we're going to do is check to make sure that each of you is receiving. The SBDC sends numerous informational emails each month, as do all of our consulting partners. And hopefully, you're receiving those and cherry-picking the information you feel is most relevant to your constituents. But we'll go back and check with Kyle and his marketing team, make sure that you're getting that. Second, we do periodically run articles about the counseling services in the newsletter and the Bowie Alert, to bring that out. As far as traditional advertising, we don't do any kind of traditional newspaper advertising, point-of-sale advertising, things like that, on any of the services. That's just not something we've, we have budgeted for there. So we do rely heavily on the tree of information flow, pass it to individual groups, and to our elected officials, and hopefully, you extend our reach to your lists.
It is one of the biggest challenges we have.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor reminds me, all of the information about these programs is on the city's website, under the, under the business tab.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council members? If I know you had a couple of things to finish up. Councilwoman Amdu Babadu, please go right ahead.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Apologies, I'm not able to be in chambers with you. I have a really bad cold, and they don't want to get anybody sick. So first of all, thank you so much for the amazing presentation. Really admire the work that you're doing, and love that you're using SCORE, and that there is some sort of synergy there between SCORE as an organization. They've been a really good organization that has served so many constituents over the last couple of years. So really glad to hear about the partnership. I have just a couple of questions. The first one, and they're pretty short. The first one is, do you, it says on your slide, the amount of loans that you supported, small businesses, or guiding, or helped to provide guidance to. Do you also make them aware of different grant opportunities that are coming out of the federal government, as well as Maryland's Department of Commerce and others?
Yeah, actually, just recently, Mr. King sent us a list of the grants that are available for small businesses in the state of Maryland. And that's something that we, that we promote and send out to our consultants to make sure that if they fit their need, then yes, we will promote that grant, and encourage, strongly encourage them to apply for that grant.
How do you go about finding out about the grant opportunities? Because part of the challenge that I see, I attended a roundtable discussion by Maryland's Department of Commerce last week, and part of the challenges that I see for a lot of small businesses, there are a number of different specialty grants, or specialized grants, that are coming out of different federal agencies. But a lot of people don't know about them unless you go digging through their websites for pages and pages and pages. So I'd love to understand, how do you find out about them? And then, how do you make them, how do you make the other small businesses in your program aware?
So, we are, you know, we're strongly monitored by the SBA and our compliance. And there, the one particular area that we have to meet every year are our metrics. And that is, are we reaching a certain level of capital infusion, business starts, meeting with clients? If a grant does not fit those metrics, then it's harder for, if it fits the client's needs, great. We'll promote it, and we will try to fit it within their, within their needs. But for us, if we're looking for seeking, or we're seeking funding to help those small businesses, if it doesn't fit into what the SBA wants us to do, as far as trying to achieve economic impact, it's a little more difficult. And I'm not sure I asked, answered your question, but there are tons of grant opportunities. I mean, even the Channel, the Francis Scott Key Bridge collapse, the first thing we did was we opened an office in the county, in Andorono County, so that we could support them right away. And through the SBA, they develop their own grants and their own funding opportunities to support those businesses. We will promote them, and we will assist them to our capability to, for them to obtain that funding.
Thank you for the answer. The last question that I, last question I have for you is, if you had, I'm sure you service a lot of different types of business. Is there one particular type of business that you service more than the other?
Well, retail restaurants is huge. I mean, that is just a very big category. I would say that they're the ones that are seeking the financial funding the most, the loans the most. So yes, we, they are, I mean, they're challenged because they also have the highest failure rate as well. So when it comes to being bankable and having the criteria for underwriting, such as their credit score and things like that, it's a little bit more of a challenge for us. But I think it's the one area that we get very creative. We work, we try to work with micro lenders. We try to work with counties that offer different lending opportunities and programs as much as we can. You know, we aren't a big organization. So if there's a grant, or there's an opportunity out there for us to help us small businesses, we, if you could tell us about it, we will try our best to see if it fits within their needs.
Thank you so much. That's all my questions, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilmembers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You mentioned retail and restaurants are one of the biggest parts of your program. Have you worked with any in Bowie?
Yes, we work frequently with restaurants in Bowie. Off the top of my head, I don't know in particular which ones we work with, but I had, one of the consultants that worked for me, Mark Wells, he is, he is based at Bowie BIC. And yes, he works quite a bit with restaurants, and especially, like I said, in the area of trying to find financing for them. Mark is a former banker, so he knows what banks are looking for when it comes to things like how to support restaurants. And I'll be quite honest, banks don't really care too much for restaurants because of their failure rate. So we end up doing what we call a blend approach to financing, and that is, we may get part of their funding from one source, but we may have to go to another source to make up for what they might need to meet their needs. And in some cases, you know, sometimes restaurants and retail come to us, and they say, I need this much money. And we say, wait a minute, we need to look at this holistically. Let us look at your finances. Maybe you need more. Maybe you don't need as much. So that's part of our role, too, is to make sure that if there are opportunities for them to receive additional financing, does it truly fit, you know, their needs?
Understood. I'd love to follow up and get the, a specific restaurant or retail location that you have helped, that is located here.
Yeah. Well, so that's, that's, I mean, I'm sorry to interrupt, but that is one of the things that is one of our challenges, is one of the conditions of our SBA requirement. And that is, we can tell you about, we've assisted restaurants, but I can't tell you who that restaurant is.
Lot of, lot of security implications, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Does our grant with you, we've given $85,000 in grants over the years that we've worked with you, does our current grant agreement with you stipulate a specific set, a number of brick-and-mortar businesses that we expect you to work with in a given year?
Yeah, so each, so how we break up each of our consultants' metrics in their reporting, and that's my job, is to make sure they meet those. And I can consistently say that the region that I manage, we carry the rest of the state. We honestly do. When I say carry, we, I, in my opinion, have probably some of the best consultants in the state of Maryland.
Okay. Does our grant with you stipulate how many brick-and-mortar businesses you have to work with here in Bowie?
It does, and we can certainly share that with you. I don't have the details right in front of me, but, but, you know, I did try to supply some information to show some of the people that we do work with. And in most cases, we exceed, or we exceed the metrics that are required for us to meet the funding goals that you guys ask for. You know, just in our county alone, you know, we've, in the last five years, we've started 17 new businesses. That may not seem like a lot of businesses, but in a small footprint, like the city of Bowie, that is a lot of businesses. And creating 106 jobs in five years, that's a lot. The dollar amount of loan and equity, when I say equity, these are people who are pulling money right out of their wallet and putting it right back into their business. But $1.4 million, that is a lot of money just for, just a city. If you look at us on a national, on a state level, we're in the hundreds of millions of dollars. And again, like I said, I think it's the one area that we really try to pride ourselves on, and that is to try to find funding for our small businesses. One of the things that I think is underrated, that I would like to say, is that the total number of clients that we counsel, in the five years we've counseled, 168 clients. Again, getting into the details of how successful they were, I, that's, that's an area, it's a great area for us. Total hours, 841 hours have we assisted businesses in the city of Bowie, okay? The average hours that we spend with those clients is five hours. That's, that's quite a bit of time. And then, the average hour per session, sitting down and speaking with them individually, is over an hour and a half. So, one of the things that we're required by the federal government, by the SBA, is something called an action plan. And that is, that action plan has to detail exactly what that client must do and what we must do to help that client. And in some cases, we have to tell them, if you don't do your part, we can't do our part. So it's, you know, it's a push and shuffle a little bit about, if you come back to us, you schedule a meeting, and you haven't fulfilled your part of that action plan, then, then it's harder for us to assist them. And it's harder for us to, should I say, what they have to understand is, they may be taking time away from somebody else who could use their services, by not fulfilling their part of the bargain.
Understood. Is there any way for us to actually scrutinize those numbers that you provide? Is there any way for us to actually scrutinize the numbers that you provide?
I mean, we can give you, we, all this information that I provided so far in this presentation is aggregate. It's not individual information. I cannot provide you, by law, when this organization was created over 30 years ago, to provide you any kind of detailed information on an individual client. So all the information that we provide you is aggregate information.
Okay. Good enough. Thank you.
All right. And if you'd like to go ahead on and wrap it up at this time?
I would just like to say, I really, I enjoy working with the city of Bowie. The one, two things I would like to say is, we have two programs that we've, we've received funding for that fit right into our wheelhouse when it comes to supporting small businesses. And one of them is called the Maryland Business Opportunity Center. This was an earmark that we received from our two senators, and this is money they provided us and helped to provide us to support small, what we call, underserved businesses. And this was a result of the pandemic. And that is, there were a lot of underserved businesses who, you know, we talk about advertising, they didn't know, or they didn't have the time to really focus on trying to obtain some of those PPP loans, or those idle loans, things like that. So the senators recognized that, and they said, okay, SBDC, we will assist you. But remember, they are not part of the SBDC. We are a conduit. They come to us first, and they say, I didn't get my share, or I need more money for this. And then, we send them to this organization called the Maryland Business Opportunity Center, and their primary role is to go out and hire subject matter experts in areas that we can't support. We can't provide legal services. They can through this earmark. We can't provide detailed financial audit information. They can through their, through their services. So they supply a level of expertise that we can't supply based on the, based on the conditions of how we can operate. The second thing, real quick, and I mentioned this earlier, is the success stories. I think this is something that's really going to open the eyes for a lot of people on the council. You're going to see for the first time that people are going to say, yes, I want to tell you my story. I want to tell you my story, and this is how it worked, and this is how the SBDC helped me. Again, since the size of Bowie, the city of Bowie is so small, it's harder for us to find those individuals. But even if we could share you information of success stories from companies in other parts of the state, you'll get some idea of how we can assist other businesses. parts of the state, you'll get some idea of how we can assist other businesses. So, thank you very much for your time. I really appreciate it. I love working with Bowie. I think you guys have a great community here. We work very closely with the historical, you know, SBDC, I'm sorry, the historical college, historical black colleges and universities. Bowie State is one of our favorites. We also work with Coppin State, we also work with Morgan State, and we also work with Eastern Shore. So, we try, again, our focus for this coming fiscal year, and our fiscal year has changed, by the way, we're now on the calendar year, we're no longer on the federal government year. But whenever we report to our stakeholders, like yourselves, we report within your fiscal year.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate your passion and your commitment.
All right. Thank you very much. Take care, everybody. Again, here's some extra presentations if you need them.
We will now be moving on to item C, which is the Bowie Community Media Corporation. I will turn this over to Councilwoman Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, back probably late last summer, as president of the Greater Bowie Chamber of Commerce, I had the opportunity of joining the board of the Bowie Community Media Corporation. And I found the organization to be, the board to be filled with very talented, creative individuals who were developing content for local television that was absolutely awesome. Now, I did not remain on the board just for our attorney. When I won my office, I resigned. But I know that the president of the board had reached out to the city council members, and I thought it would be a great idea to have her come in and talk a little bit about what they do. So, thank you. I'll turn it over to Ms. Wall.
Good evening, you all. It's a pleasure to be here. My name is Candy Wall. I'm the president of Bowie Community Media Corporation. I am actually joined here tonight with several of the board members, Vice President Paula Ramshack, Secretary Terrence Pitts, and immediate past President George Wood. We are also, most of the staff for Bowie Community Media Corporation as well. We have two other outstanding individuals, one that is a Bowie State University 2023 graduate, who is our technical video editor, and we have another young lady who supports us with social media. Just thank you all in advance for being here and showing you all's due diligence and your commitment to this, because I know it is late. So, I will definitely try to move through this as much as possible. I will be sending after this a one-pager of information. So, you see, I have my laptop here, but I will be reading from that and giving you all some notes and some information, and then I'll be following up with the one-pager so that you all can reference it. And of course, hopefully, we'll be able to come back and share with you all some updates as time goes on. So, just a little bit about the Bowie Community Media Corporation. We actually handle all of the programming and scheduling for the channel, one of the channels that's owned by the city of Bowie, a public access channel. You have Verizon, it's on Channel 11. If you have Comcast Xfinity, it's on Channel 77. And inclusive of the programming also comes the recruiting of producers and working with, directly with producers, working directly with Una Cooper and her staff in the city of Bowie studio as well, in the Ken Hill Center. So, two ways that producers are able to share their content. One, as I just mentioned, they go inside of the city of Bowie studio, and another is through file submission. Another thing that I should probably mention to you all is that I am a producer, all of the staff back there is producers. So, we wear multiple hats in terms of the board, staff, and actual producers of content as well. Want to share with you all that we are partnering, and let me back up a bit, we got into this role maybe a year ago to Councilwoman Rogers' point. So, this has now been a one, kind of one year of our tenure, if you will. We spent about the first six months just trying to get organized while still producing content and still trying to, you know, ensure that we see the value and the value proposition of the overall channel, which we have. And now, we've kind of just said, "Hey, let's hit the ground running. We know what we're working with, we know what this is, and let's just bring our talent and just best efforts to bear for the city of Bowie and its residents." So, we've been able to partner with Bowie High School, Bowie State University, with the Bowie Bay Sox, as well as the Bowie Performing Arts Center, just to name a few, to start airing that content on the channel, on the actual television channel. And that has been exciting for us. We're hearing the feedback already from the organizations that have presented here tonight and said, "Oh, we know a way that you can, another way that you can get the information out there to the community, you can air it on the channel." We definitely look at this channel as a hidden gem. It really is. I've had folks question, "Is television dead?" Television is not dead. I'm a member of the National Press Club where we talk about these things, television, newspapers, you know, has social media taken over everything? Has streaming taken over everything? And I think one key way to know if television is dead is you just turn it on. And if you turn on the TV and you still get Channel 4, Channel 5, Channel 7, Channel 9, Channel 11, it's not dead. It's there, and people are turning it on. And hey, who doesn't want to be on TV? Isn't this on TV? I texted my parents and told them to tune in, because I wanted them to see me, because I didn't know they was going to be on TV. But at any rate, I wanted to throw that in there because I know that's been a lot of questions around streaming and just the overall, are people still watching TV? And they absolutely are. Now, also, in the spirit of transparency, because this is public access, we are still trying to figure out, and this is across the public access community, the actual viewership of the actual channel. We're still trying to work through that, and that's part of our future plans and really trying to engage with the residents and understanding who is actually watching the actual television channel. And that may even come to actually engaging with the cable companies, we'll see, and I'll, of course, be working with the city to understand what that process looks like. But from a YouTube perspective, we do have the numbers of the Bowie TV YouTube channel, which I will share in a moment. Just a little bit about kind of what we're working with and what we're able to manage now with the current staff that we have of the current television shows. Right now, we have 22 current television shows. I keep stressing current because that means within the calendar year of content. So, that means that content is applicable based on the date, the time. It is not considered malinformation, meaning it's old. So, it's current and it's relevant and of interest, we believe, to the city of Bowie residents in the surrounding communities as well. A lot of content around local news, events happening in the city of Bowie. Again, Bowie State, Bowie Bay Sox, Terrence Pitts does that content, a lot of the local news that's happening, George Wood and Paula Ramshack, among other producers, they cover that as well. Then we do have content that kind of reaches the masses. Yes, it's of interest, we believe, to Bowie residents, but it's of interest to a lot of people. We have some extraordinary producers that cover not just local news, but also regional and national news. So, we also are media credentia with the Baltimore Ravens, the Washington Commanders, and the Washington Mystics as well. I actually was notified by the Washington Commanders just this morning that Bowie TV is one of four television stations that they deem as a consistent, incredible media source based on the consistency and quality of the coverage that we've provided thus far. The other three are NBC4, ABC7, and WUSA9. Television is not dead, okay? So, I want to make sure we know that and we understand that. We're going to get to YouTube now, though, because that is an important point. Now, you might want to break out your pen and paper for this part, because I think these numbers are kind of large, and we're happy about this. So, for the Bowie TV YouTube page, and it's Bowie underscore TV on YouTube, in the last 365 days, and this is as of last Friday, June the 14th, Bowie Community Media Corporation has produced 702 episodes. That means this is content that is also aired, has been aired, or can still be aired on the channel. This is within the last year. We have a total number of subscribers of 2,500 and still growing. The total number of views is now a little bit over 685,000. Watch time hours is 44,000, and all of these are growing. It's probably updated now, since I've been in here. I'll pause there to see if anyone has any questions.
Any questions from any councilmembers at this time? Hearing none?
Okay, perfect. So, in terms of, we're just scratching the surface. We really are, and so, we would like to be able to come back to you all and talk to you more about what we're doing, really be able to share more, be able to learn more from you all on what is it that you and your constituents are interested in saying? What do you want to watch? What do you want to view? Again, as always, Councilmember Steve and Councilmember Rogers have, has already met with us, I believe. We have some more of these kind of one-on-one virtual meetings set up, and we'll be reaching back out to you all to see if we can spend some time with you all to get some more feedback and just share a bit more about who we are individually, as a collective, and what we're doing for the channel. We definitely want to start with the education around television broadcasting, storytelling, the multiple ways that you can do it. A lot of this stuff, we are doing it from our cell phones because we don't, you know, have much of a budget. So, we're doing those things from our cell phones. We're doing things from using tools like StreamYard and Zoom and others to really just bring our creative assets to bear, to bring about quality television. So, we want to continue to do that as well as work directly with the community and know what they want to see, give them an opportunity to be on TV, and of course, get some more producers in as well.
I look forward to a collaborative effort with the entire council, and thank you for being here this evening.
Yes, thank you so much for your time.
And we look forward to that one sheet.
Yes, I will be sending that, for sure. Yes, thank you.
All right. At this time, we will not--
Mr. Mayor, actually, may I ask just a quick question?
I didn't see your hand up. Go ahead.
No, that's all right. It came in late, that's why. It was mea culpa. Just a quick question on the relationship of the board and the city. We're appointing those members, correct?
Yes. Well, wait, wait, not the city. Sorry, not the city, not the city. We're separate from the city in that way. So, we have our own board and producer membership that elects the officers of the organization.
Councilmember, that was started, that was established, I think, quite a few years ago.
Yes, it was, this is like, yes, maybe like 20 years ago. Okay, they're 30 years ago. Yes, you remember. Okay, yes, 30.
Give you context there, Mayor Protell.
Yeah, yeah. All right, well, I will look to staff, maybe if you guys could give me the abridged history of how we started it all out and where we are presently, that would be greatly appreciated.
Yes, we will happily. You want that now or in the future?
Oh, no, I'll just ask, I'll just ask staff to do that on our behalf.
Oh, yes, okay, sorry.
That's okay, no, that's fine, yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you again.
And thanks for coming in this evening.
Yes, definitely. Thank you all for having me. Council, did you have another question?
All right, thank you again. At this time, we will be moving on to the item moved from the consent agenda, and I will be turning that over to our esteemed colleague, Dennis Brady.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, just real quickly, not a lot of debate or discussion on this. I moved it from the consent agenda only because I would be very concerned that if we had left this on the consent agenda and the people, the citizens, found out about it, they would think we're trying to pull something over their eyes. So, I think it's better that we just make this announcement of what we're doing, kind of why we're doing it. But the topic deals with a legislative action request that we are sending to the Maryland Municipal League for consideration by the league to make it a priority for the next legislative session in the State House. And our request is to allow municipalities to adopt a one-half cent piggyback sales tax to provide a new source of revenue. With this source pressured to raise the municipal property tax rate and/or commercial tax rate to provide services to its citizens would be removed or at least diminished. And the reason for doing that is, we are 90% dependent upon residential tax base, 10% commercial. So, if we were to try and generate additional revenue, we either have to raise one or both of those items, or we could sit there and say, "Hell, let's help the commercial out, let's raise the taxes on property and lower the tax rate for commercial," which would not be fair. But I think we need to look at a new way of generating revenue. I'm not an optimist with this success with this, but at least I think this would start a discussion at the league level and then maybe at the State House with looking at, are there new ways that municipalities can generate revenue to support the services? And in the city of Bowie, I think they are outstanding services for its citizens. So, I encourage all my colleagues to vote yes on this, but I wanted to explain it to the citizens so that they didn't think we were trying to pull a fast one. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Any discussion, questions? Council, I think we discussed, but that's it, okay?
Go on.
If we need to. Do we need to take action tonight?
Yes, Mayor, because it was removed from consent, so it wasn't approved.
Yes, I would like to move that we adopt Resolution R 3424, authorizing and transmittal of a legislative action request to the Maryland Municipal League for consideration.
I second the motion.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please respond with an aye.
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 Opposed, saying favor? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. I will now entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for adjournment.
I second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All in favor, please respond with an aye. Aye. Opposed, saying favor? Hearing none, motion carries. And I'd like to say thank you to everyone who's gone through this with us this evening and stayed with us, and we appreciate all you do. And against staff, I just wanted to say thank you again for all you do, and particularly those events between Bowie Fest and Juneteenth, that was a lot, but we did a great job, as always, you did of getting that done. And to all my colleagues and to those still listening, have a good evening. Good night. Last, who won the basketball game?